For Commission Quick to come back. Okay, good evening. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Millbury Planning Commission meeting for November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty one. Again, this is going to be done remotely, and we do have all the instructions I've been already sent out online if anybody wants to participate. We'll go ahead and call the moving to order now. So maybe we have the real call, please.
Commissioner Donagro, and I see him. He is coming on right now. Let me just promote him to panelist. Okay, I'll come back to him. Commissioner Wong.
Hello, everyone present.
Thank you. Commissioner Quake.
Present.
Vice Chair Davis.
Here.
Chair Joe.
Present.
And Commissioner Donagro.
Present.
Thank you.
Great, and maybe let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. You can have our flag listed. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States.
And to the Republic. For which it stands. One nation. Under God. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all. So we will start off with item one, which is our agenda review. Do we have any items for review in terms of our agenda from the commissioners? Nope. Okay, seeing none, we'll go on to approval of item two, approval of minutes for the regular meeting of November first, two thousand and twenty one. Do we have a motion? Or any discussion questions?
Move to approve.
We have a move. Did they have a second?
Yes.
Okay, second from Commissioner Lego. I actually had a question because I think on Manza Mida Court. We had commission had asked for additional information, and I think there was more information requested in terms of the tree situation. I think there were some concerns as to whether how much accuracy or where the source of the tree reports. So I think that's something that I it wasn't so clear. It just said tree that was noted, page three, top of page three, tree that was noted as to be removed. So I believe if that's from the other commissioners, that's correct. I think that's what was asked for, though, is that we wanted to have a little more information about that.
Make a
three words.
An edit to the to the minutes.
The minutes.
Taking the change that the commission had requested. For information for the accuracy of the report.
Right, if that's going to come up later, then we would like to have a little report in terms of the trees. But am I the only one remembering it that way, or is any of the commissioners? Is that okay if we do an edit to that?
I remember us asking for some type of city approved review of the tree.
Right, yeah. I'm not sure if it was city approved, but it was something to that effect that we weren't, we wanted to have a little better report, honey. So that would be the only change that I would suggest. So I believe Commissioner Quake made the motion. So would that be okay with you, Commissioner Quake?
That's fine. There was quite a bit of discussion on that item, and I personally, I'll go along with you. But I think they recaptured the majority of what was discussed, and they were here, so they know what the rest of this stuff was.
Commissioner Davis has a comment.
I made the motion.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Davis.
Okay. Yeah. You can amend it. That's fine.
And then Commissioner Donagro, I think, did the second, so.
He need a second.
That's fine. Okay, great. Maybe have the vote, please.
Commissioner Donagro?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Quake?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Quake, I'm sorry, Chair Joe.
Yes.
Great, approved five to zero with the edit on the third page.
Thank you. And then moving on to item number three, public communication. So this is the time reserved for the public for any persons wishing to make any comments on subjects that are under the purview of the Planning Commission and not on the agenda. So this is outside of what is planned for discussion. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak?
There are no hands at this time.
Okay, so moving on to public hearing for public hearings, item four A is four one East Millbury Avenue, which is a planning entitlement approval extension request for a previously approved modification to an approved precise development plan. The design review modification of approved master sign program and parking variance to allow less than the required parking for a new seventy one thousand six hundred forty nine square foot, two hundred nine guest room Moxie Hotel. So this is an action item, and then we have the staff report, please.
Yes, are people seeing the presentation on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Good evening, Chair Joe, planning commissioners, project applicants, and members of the public. My name is Sam Fielding, Senior Planner in the Community Development Department, and I will be presenting the planning entitlement extension request for the four one East Millbury Moxie Hotel project. The project is located at four one East Millbury Avenue. This is a planning entitlement approval extension request for a previously approved modification to an approved precise development plan, design review, modification of approved master sign program, and parking variance to allow less than the required parking for a new seventy one thousand six hundred forty nine square foot, two hundred nine guest room Moxie Hotel. The applicant submitted an extension request on September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty one, to the previously approved permit on November tenth, two thousand and twenty one by the City Council. A little bit about the background of the project. As mentioned, for on November tenth, two thousand and twenty, the Millbury City Council approved the Moxie Hotel project. It included the approved specific development plan, design review, modification of the approved master sign program, the parking variance to allow less than the required parking, and to the adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the new Moxie Hotel at the Weston and Aloft Hotel site. The project, to refresh the planning commissioners and the public, is a new six-story, approximately seventy thousand gross square foot, two hundred nine-room Moxie branded hotel, which is part of the Marriott. The project includes landscaping, hotel outdoor space amenities for guests and the public, ten electric vehicle parking spaces, a new freestanding electronic billboard, entry sign, wayfinding, canopy, and hotel signage. Again, this was approved by City Council on November tenth, two thousand and twenty. As part of this project, SEQA was required. The City of Millbury prepared a mitigated negative declaration document for the project based on the determination that all adverse environmental impacts identified as potentially resulting from the project can and will be mitigated to a less than significant level. The City Council adopted the mitigated negative declaration Resolution two thousand and eighty-one at the November tenth, two thousand and twenty City Council public hearing. The requested two-year extension involves no alterations to the project, and therefore, the prior final initial study mitigated negative declaration document for the original project remains valid and in full effect. This is the location of the project, so it's located roughly in between the Weston Hotel and the Aloft Hotel. The rectangular shaped diagram here shows the approximate location of where the proposed Moxie Hotel would be built. And it's located off of East Millbury Ave and Bay Shore Highway. The applicant submitted several reasons for the extension request. Primarily, the uncertainties related to the COVID pandemic resulted in closures and reduced vacancies at the hotel sites. In addition, last year was not an ideal time for them to submit the building permits and commence construction. However, the project sponsor does remain optimistic regarding the recovery and revival of the hotel industry, and that the hotel will be able to be built in the near future. The benefits of the project to Millbury would be increased annual transit occupancy tax revenue and additional employment opportunities. At this time, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission review the extension of time requests, consider the public testimony as well as the staff recommendation, and approve the requested time extension and attached resolution.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fielding. Do we have any questions of staff? Commissioner Davis?
Not a question, just a couple of quick corrections. It's not reduced vacancies, it's either reduced occupancy or increased vacancies. It's just a typo, basically.
Okay.
Twice, so.
Okay.
We understand that they have empty hotel rooms.
More vacancies, right.
More empties.
Yes.
Good touch. Anything else? Any other commissioners? Commissioner Wong?
I guess what caught my eye in the write-up was that there was a lot line adjustment that was recently completed and approved by the city. So with this lot line adjustment, does that, and also the separation of a separate parcel for the proposed Moxie Hotel? So can you explain what that separation was? Is this lot subdivided, and does that affect the prior agreement with the parking allotment and requirements?
The, yeah, there was a lot line adjustment as as part of this project. I guess I could go back to the slide of the site plan. I don't have that specific information to show you in the presentation this evening, but what I can say is that the adjustment is related to the lot lines sort of cutting across through the Moxie Hotel site area. And so the lot line adjustment creates this a separate, it adjusts the three existing lot lines to create a separate sort of parcel that would enclose the Moxie Hotel. So it's not creating another partial or another a lot, it's just sort of, it's just an adjustment of the existing lot lines to basically separate out the Moxie Hotel, and it would not impact the parking analysis and the parking study that was done for the proposed project.
So does that please confirm if so that will not create a separate subdivision with any other intended use or building structure?
No.
Okay.
And then just to note that this is not a change, the current, at the project that we looked at before.
Right.
By City Council, this is just an extension of what.
Yeah, this is only an extension request. There's no changes to the previously approved project.
Okay, any others? Okay, seeing then, do we have the applicant here? The applicants would.
Yes, staff did invite Tuya Catalano and Kevin Tizala to the meeting to answer any questions.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect.
Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you so much. So good evening, commissioners. I'm Tuya Catalano with Ruben, Junius, and Rose, representing the project sponsor. So I wanted to first thank you for hearing our request tonight, and as Mr. Fielding noted, the project was approved a year ago, and we are here today only to ask for a two-year extension to the prior approvals. I'm going to ask you to also promote Boniface Law in a moment to a panelist, and he will provide a bit more detail on why we need the extension in order to retain the approvals and to be able to build the project in the future. But both of us are going to be available and happy to answer any questions you have about the extension. And just briefly to address Commissioner Wong's question, all three lots are currently owned by the same owner, so the existing parking is not impacted at all, and when the third hotel is built, it will be built on the adjusted lot boundaries so that each of the three hotels will be on their sort of separate lot area. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Boniface for some additional remarks. So if you could, please promote him, that would be great.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me? Okay?
Yes, we can hear you. Good evening.
Great. Firstly, thank you, everyone, for taking the time this evening. My name is Boniface Law. I am with Servic Capital Group, Sam had mentioned Kevin Tizala, my colleague in the office that's been working closely on this project for a number of years now. And, you know, we've been working hand in hand, going through multiple rounds of feedback with the team. So firstly, thank you again for all the feedback and the hard work. We are still very much vested in Millbury. We still continue to be very bullish on the economics of this project and frankly, our overall presence in the Millbury market. However, as Sam outlined in his overview, COVID has certainly been unpredictable, and, you know, just to give you, share some facts of just the overall recovery of the US, as well as specifically in the Bay Area, and why that pertains to our extension request. San Francisco Bay Area, actually, given all the restriction, has actually been one of the hardest-hit MSAs in the entire country as it relates to hotel occupancies and hotel revenues. As a percentage, it's actually only roughly seventy, down seventy percent to the two thousand and nineteen performance. And so with those economics and the current conditions, we do believe that the recovery will take a little bit longer than previously anticipated. And then furthermore, with, you know, these locations and the dependence of airline traffic, we all know that San Francisco Airport and San Francisco Air International has seen a massive decline in employment. And so we do expect that with now the international travel coming back, we are very hopeful of the convention business coming back, but the overall timeline, we believe, is just shifted a little bit longer than we expected. So for those reasons, we're just sort of asking commission and to for this extension, but we're still very much committed to the project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wong. Do we have any questions of the applicant from the planning commissioners?
I guess.
Commissioner Donagro?
Are there any time-sensitive mitigations as part of this project? As part of the original entitlement?
If I can answer, I don't believe so. I mean, all the conditions of approval will continue to apply, so when the project is built, all of them will be satisfied. But I don't believe that there was anything that was required to be done within any certain timeline. So it's all triggered by the construction of the project itself.
And Sam, you can confirm that?
Um. Yes, I can. I can confirm that. I mean, I have the, in the resolution that was part of your packet. If you look at Resolution twenty dash eighty-one.
I'll make sure we plot our eyes and cross our Ts on.
Yes, yes.
Twenty dash eighty is not the one?
Yeah, Resolution twenty dash eighty-one. The mitigation measures deal primarily with air quality. So fugitive dust control, best management practices during construction. So it's during the site preparation and the grading activities, we have mitigation measures that are required during that and mitigation monitoring during construction. And then, under cultural resources, there's a mitigation monitoring program for unanticipated discovery of archaeological resources. So, and that would be, you know, as the ground disturbing activities start, if there's anything discovered, then there's procedures mitigation monitoring that's required for that. The greenhouse gas measures is the next one. The project is required to incorporate greenhouse gas emission reduction measures. And these are, you know, related to building electrification, onsite renewable energy, renewable electricity, and electric vehicle charging stations, on the installation of the charging stations. And then greenhouse gas reduction plan would be required. And there's, we have two phases on that, but that comes later in the project. And those are, yeah, so those are the primary, the primary mitigation measures that I just gone over there.
Thank you. Commissioner Donagro, you have other questions?
That was it.
Okay, thank you. Any other commissioners?
Yeah, follow up on that question also, I guess.
Commissioner Wong?
Thank you. Follow up on that was that, under the Moxie Hotel conditions of approval dated November tenth, the attachment just preceding the one that Sam mentioned, there are a number of special conditions that have, like, for example, design applicant shell, able to have revised Moxie Hotel plan exterior design received and date standby staff on October twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty. So there's a number of dates with conditions and due dates there. So do those also need to be updated also? I'm not sure about what the design, how far the design has been progressed.
So I don't think, there is, again, there is no change that's happening to this project, so.
Yes, there's no change, and the design is, like, when they, the applicant submits on the plans to for building supplemental, planning staff will review all of the conditions of approval and the design that was approved to make sure that what is submitted during during building supplemental matches what was approved in the resolution and in the conditions of approval for the project.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that we're not having to change any other dates and extensions.
No.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, can we open for a public comment, Ben? Everybody's, do we vote to open? This is always the thing. Do we vote to open public comment, or is?
No, we don't have to vote to open.
We don't have to. Okay, so we will open for public comment. Any members of the public wishing to speak?
There are no members of the public.
There are no members of the public, so can we have a vote to close public comment, Ben? Can I have a motion?
I make a motion.
Oh. I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Quake, second by Commissioner Davis, and can we have a vote?
Commissioner Donagro?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Approve.
Commissioner Quake?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
And Chair Joe?
Yes, thank you. So we've closed public comment, and then now we will go ahead on to the any motions or discussion.
I make a motion. Can I make a motion?
Yes, please.
Okay, I make a motion that the entitlement approval expense, extension request for pubis approved modification to an approved precise development plan, design review modification of approved master sign program, parking variance to allow less than the required parking for a new seventy one thousand six forty nine square foot, two oh nine guest rooms, Moxie Hotel.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Davis, and any any further discussion, if not from you? Do we have any further discussion, Commissioner Donagro?
I feel like the city was happy with the deal. Obviously, we're still content with the future, excited about the future of the hotel development. I don't think we have any reason to believe that, obviously, COVID's impact was not significant on the hotel industry locally. I like the idea of giving an extension to somebody who's part of our community and contributes to our income and to our city's coffers by their product and labor. I'm very excited for it. I also don't want to see, you know, new requirements that could pop up over time for some of the community benefits that have been established recently, come onto an old deal and sour things. So I'm very excited to see this pass.
Thank you. Very much so. Anyone else? Okay, can we have the vote, please?
Commissioner Donagro?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Approve.
Commissioner Quake?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Joe?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
We just hope everything gets moving very quickly so we can get moving on this hotel.
Yeah. Hopefully for all of us that
Yes.
get travel, hotel, all of that back in order, so. Thank you, and good luck.
Thank you, everyone.
So we'll move on to item four B, which is the twelve and twenty-four Elder Avenue. This is a public hearing on a design review permit and a conditional use permit application to allow the construction of a new second-story addition to an existing single-story duplex residence located in a duplex triplex zoning district. So maybe we have the staff report, please.
Yes. Hi, Chair Joe and fellow commissioners. Tonight, I will be presenting design review permits and conditional use permit for twelve and twenty-four Elder Avenue. My name is Christian Santana, and I'm the assistant planner with this project. So the project address is at twelve and twenty-four Elder Avenue. The applicant is requesting a design review permit and a conditional use permit to allow a second-story addition and a remodel to an existing single-story duplex residence located in the duplex triplex R two zoning district. So here's the project location. It's situated within the Highlands area of Millbury, towards the southern end of town, along what I believe is Millbury Avenue. And a little background on the project, it's within the R two zone, the lot size is six thousand square feet. The proposal itself is to construct a second floor addition that is six hundred and thirty-five square feet with a two hundred and five first floor addition. The existing home is two thousand sixty-five square feet, and with the two additions, the total floor area would be twenty eight hundred and forty-four square feet. So here's a site plan of the, of the existing condition. The rear structure, that is, two hundred and five square feet, is slated to be removed, and the lot coverage, that's how the lot coverage remains the same. I believe it's thirty four point four percent. And this is the proposed site plan, kind of outlining the first story addition where that would go, and the second story addition of six hundred and thirty-five square feet. And here's a little more detail into the setbacks. The R two zoning district does not require upper story setbacks, but in this case, the architect and the applicant voluntarily added some secondary setbacks to kind of give some break between the frontage and the second story addition, more of a, to give the building a less of a bulky feel. And these measurements are indicated right here. Here is the existing floor plan. And these are, as mentioned before, these are, this is a duplex, so this, I believe, this is twenty-four Elder Avenue, and then this is twelve Elder Avenue. And here is where the additions are going to be built. This two hundred and five square foot first floor addition, it will mostly consist of a kitchen, and there's some interior modifications to the walls and the floor plan, as well as straightening out the garage wall. And here is the proposed second floor plan. Because it's consisting of two bedrooms and two walk-in closets and two bathrooms. Here is the existing front elevation facing Elder Avenue. The existing rear elevation. The left side elevation. As well as the right side elevation facing Millbury Avenue. Here is the proposed front-facing elevation facing Elder Avenue with the second story addition. And here's the rear facing, rear-facing elevation. The left side elevation, as well as the right side elevation facing Millbury Avenue. Here is a rendering of the project. The project will consist of the, the proposed finish would be comprised of a gray spell like colored gray stucco for the first floor and this would be primarily applied towards the, the first floor for that expansion. As well as the same color gray spell. But to the second floor addition, instead of stucco, it would be a horizontal lap hardy composite siding. And as well as painted the same color gray spell. The trim would be painted Swiss coffee and the roof is a silver birch color. And here's the outline of the material. For the conditional use permit, two garage spaces are required per unit in a duplex. The project requires four covered parking spaces. The project contains two enclosed one car parking garages. The second story addition increases the extent of the nonconformity, but there is no, but not the intensity. So essentially, this duplex will remain a duplex, but one of the units is just expanding. And the nonconforming parking requires the applicant to obtain a conditional use permit in order to continue the nonconformity. A total of three neighbor consultation forms were sent out to adjacent neighbors. Three neighbors did return the forms in support of the project. The following findings are required under section ten point zero five point twenty five zero zero of the Millbrae Municipal Code for the planning commission to approve the requested designer, design review permit. The architectural landscaping and general appearance of the proposed building or structure and ground are in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. The project compliance complies with all applicable development regulations. And the project will not increase, will not cause a significant visual impact to neighboring views from principal rooms of a residence. And number four, the proposal is not detrimental to the orderly, harmonious and safe development of the city and will not impair the desirability of investment or occupation in the neighborhood in which the building or structure is proposed to be erected. As for the conditional use permit findings, the following findings are required under section ten point zero five point twenty five twenty of the Millbrae Municipal Code for the planning commission to approve the requested conditional use permit. One, the establishment maintenance or operation of the use applied for will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use. And the establishment's maintenance and operation of the use applied for will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the property and improvements in the neighborhood of such a proposed use. With that in conclusion, staff recommends the planning commission consider adopting a resolution approving the design review permit number twenty one dash zero nine two and a conditional use permit to allow the construction of a new second story, first floor addition and a remodel to an existing single story duplex residence at twelve and twenty four Elder Avenue, subject to the attached conditions of approval. With that, I am available for any questions as well as the applicant is also here to give a brief overview of the project after. Thank you.
Do we have questions? Commissioner Wong?
Yes, question on the rendering on the drawing A one point one. There appears to be area to the left of the building showing the fence.
Can you pause? Oh, let's pause for a moment to get to that. Can we, do you have the drawings that you can show?
Which sheet was it again?
Eight, one point one. The area to the left of the house there, is that considered a parking area?
Um, this area, it's not designated for parking. We only have, the requirement is for two enclosed parking spaces, so we would only have the garage parking.
Right. And then the appears to be only at ten foot from the garage to the sidewalk, so. Is that correct? Won't be big enough for parking there either? Or is that not considered being a driveway for parking? That there'd be two additional parking spaces there?
This area right here? So the, the distance is around thirteen feet from the garage door to the the edge of the sidewalk and you essentially would be able to park a very small car on that concrete driveway, but it's not slated for parking itself.
Drawing also on that left side again, it shows faded concrete driveway also. And then there's appears to be maybe a gate there. They plan on putting in parking inside the gate or not?
Give me one second. Let me pull up the site plan. So this is the proposed site plan. This area is designated to have concrete, so a car theoretically would be able to park in this location, but the area is in, it wouldn't be counted towards the parking requirement. And they are planning on retaining the, the gates in this area.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Any others? Scrolling back and forth. Commissioner Del Negro?
So I did ask this question of staff before about the ADU in the back. A little history on that, if you don't mind providing it to the group.
The accessory?
Yeah, accessory. A carport, a car garage or a car.
Yes. So, so the, the rear structure was permitted in nineteen fifty two as a carport. Over the last decades, it seems like it has been enclosed without permit. But the applicant has mentioned that they are planning as a part of this project to remove the structure entirely. So that's where the thirty four percent lot coverage comes into place. So the lot coverage itself wouldn't necessarily change. They're essentially moving over the square footage from this permitted structure from nineteen fifty two into this area for that first floor addition.
So I guess the point I'd make is that that was a driveway on the side of the house leading back to a carport at one point. Obviously, they had the option of having a more off-street parking at one point, but have removed it for either it looks like possibly an ADU from the pictures. Or maybe storage with windows and sliding glass doors on the side of the building. I'm a little bit more concerned, though, about the driveway here. You say it's thirteen feet. The average car is fourteen foot seven inches. Fourteen point seven foot is the average car length. If you go onto Google Maps and actually look at this residence, you'll see in Google Maps on the street view that the cars that currently parking in that driveway are hanging out and blocking the sidewalk every day. You know, these are not parking spots in front of that driveway. In fact, the cars are actually impeding pedestrians and they shouldn't be there legally.
Do we have any other? Commissioners? Okay, do we, Commissioner Quigg, are you raising your hand?
What were you, I'm sorry, Chris. You're saying that a car does not fit inside the garage?
No, no, on the driveway.
Oh, yes, we knew it wasn't going to fit.
But the current residents have been parking their cars in the driveway and blocking the sidewalk, hanging out entirely.
That, maybe we can ask the applicant, but it doesn't really affect the project.
No, they are illegally blocking pedestrians and it needs to.
So we can.
Not our issue.
Let me sure we don't count them as parking spots.
We're not. It's not being counted. The only parking that we're counting is the garage.
Exactly. The way I understand it, it is a nonconforming, it's an existing one car parking for each of the units. At the time it was built, it was inconforming, but now it's not, but it's, it's not intensifying it, so we got to go with the way it is. And there is one car that can fit inside the garage, right?
In each garage.
One, each one.
And I want to be very clear is that the parking, the driveway to the left, the fence is set back further in the garage. They can put a car in the driveway in front of the fence leading down to that what used to be a carport and be clear.
Even if, I mean, regardless, the requirement is for the cupboard, right, two cupboard parking, so having additional parking even on, on site would not alleviate the issue. And they're not making it worse, so. Do we have any others, any other questions, staff? Okay, well, we can talk more. Let's move on to the applicant if we can have the applicant.
Click the right button.
Hello, welcome.
Hello.
Hi, thank you. You can go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Michael Coghlan. Yep, this is Michael Coghlan. I'm the designer and engineer. I think Christian covered it quite well with all the, the notes on the size and the materials. I've had several, you know, sit-down meetings with the owner to arrive at the floor plan that we submitted and really carefully, you know, went through what was, what was needed and arrangement of the stairs and all the interior as well as just the windows to kind of match what was there. It was important to the owner to have it step in really kind of not look like just a big block. So we took all those things into account and so if there's any, any questions I can help with.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? And is the owner here today or is it just Mr. Coghlan?
I invited him to listen in, but.
Would he like to speak?
Yeah.
Is his name Mike? There's a mic or?
No.
No?
That's this, I'm Michael.
Okay, there's another mic, but that's all.
Okay, then, and questions of the applicant, then we'll go ahead and help Mr. Coghlan. Commissioner Wong?
I have a question for Michael. What were the considerations for having the similar siding materials from the second floor allowed to the bottom floor?
Well, it's, it's, in my experience, that that's something that is you know, generally asked for, just with the variety of projects I've done, so I don't think the owner was, you know, was pretty flexible and could have gone with a number of different things, but we, we arrived at this. You know, my next task is going to be putting together a full set of construction documents, including all the details for construction, so really trying to be conscious about the construction cost and also aesthetic look to it. But we're pretty flexible.
Is that, Commissioner Wong, do you have more questions or are you okay for now?
Thank you.
Any others? Commissioner Del Negro?
The other thing I would ask is about the ADU in the back. I did notice that the existing ADU overhangs the neighbor's fence. The actual roof actually hangs into the neighbor's property. I'm sure the boys that they're happy about that element being removed.
I've met with, with three neighbors. It wasn't easy to get on all their schedules, but anyways, I was able to connect with all of them and get signatures. No one made that comment. And yes, it is getting removed, so I think that will solve that, that issue.
Did you hear the questions earlier about the part of the driveway? Did you want to maybe answer that?
About the driveway, yeah. I mean, me and Christian looked at a few different things. There is, there is a permit on that structure and it's getting removed, so it's but that, that driveway is there and there's a legal, I guess, what I call a curb cut that, an apron that is, extends out to the street, so that's one more, I guess, piece of evidence that it was used that way. It's really just the one owner lives there. And one unit may have been rented in the past to one person, so really, I don't think you're going to find more than two vehicles there, but yeah, it is, it is a paved area available for parking. And I can't say that, and all the times I've been there, I've seen something overhang the sidewalk, but of course, that's something the owner would have to be conscious of to, to not block sidewalk.
Thank you. Commissioner Wong?
Some comment on the left side of the house where there appeared to be a driveway leading to carport in the back. Will the future design include a gate to allow parking within that side? Or will there be a driveway there?
Well, with the new addition and one of the plans, we had detailed some landscape, new landscape. I mean, I'd say overall, the landscape is, is well landscaped around the property. I don't, there wasn't any plan, proposed plan to alter that gate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I don't have any other comment there.
Commissioner Quigg or Commissioner Davis, do you have any questions? Commissioner Quigg, you're muted.
Um, no, I, I, I think it's going to be just fine. I just wonder personally if there is an owner and they've just decided to do the second story on one side and not the other side, but you know, that was just kind of a curiosity, I think, but nothing to do with project. I think the project is fine. I, I don't think we need to get into the nits and the grits of that second spot. Personally, I would prefer to have landscaping than a car parked there. It is very near to the Al Camino and nowadays, we're not supposed to worry too much about parking and I think it's a good project. I'm, I'm good with it.
Thank you. I think Commissioner Del Negro, you had your hand raised. Did you have another question? No, you didn't. Okay. Okay, so I haven't seen no other questions. We're going to go ahead and open up for a public comment. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak?
Not at this time.
Yep, okay, quiet, quiet meeting. So I guess we will vote. Can we have a motion to close the vote, to close the public comment? From Commissioner Quigg, we have a first motion to close public comment. Commissioner Del Negro, second. Can we have a vote, please? Just to close the public comment time.
Commissioner Del Negro?
Yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Yes.
Commissioner Quigg?
Oops, you're on mute. She says, yes, you're on mute.
Yes, I know.
Thank you. Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
And Chair Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. Public comments.
And do we have any, any motion or discussion? Oh, I, I actually did want to ask, it's okay, Mr. Coghlan, why, I, I had the same question as Commissioner Quigg in that, just curious as to why just one side and not the other? Is that just an owner unit?
I think it was just really an owner driven. I think it was just really an owner-driven decision, and I think it was a balance of you know, the investment that's going to be, what it's going to take to get this done, not to go too big. And really, he had the other one, the other unit, twelve is sort of kind of fixed up already, it's, it's this twenty-four that he wants to renovate now, and so truly there was no plan to increase the the southerly, you know, twelve unit.
Okay, sounds good, thank you. So any other, any commissioners have a motion or discussion? Commissioner Deng.
Give a view, is, is I actually agree with Commissioner Wong about, obviously, you know, seeing a top and a bottom have different materials without something tying together. It always does create a sort of view that this was something that's added on later, not part of a unified building. I would like to see some, maybe some of that same siding put at least on the bottom floor, at least on the bottom half, or at least something that ties the two together material-wise. I know that we, as general, have some difficulties with spaced materials between top and bottom floors for additions. I am happy to see a non-conforming ADU that's not legally there get removed and have a building that is fully permitted, that's fantastic. Particularly at the point I noted out about it hanging over the property line, I'm sure that that is not necessarily a nice attractive feature for the property next door, and they're getting a benefit out of having that, that fixed. I am still concerned, obviously, about the parking in the driveways and the impact it has on pedestrians, particularly as we move away from a car-centric culture and we're near the station, people do walk on those sidewalks, and it is in front of a school. I think it's very important that you know, obviously, they stop crossing the street, but there's nothing legally we can do except shorten the sidewalk, or shorten the driveways, or increase the driveways to allow for, or limit possibility of parking there. I, I like the project, I like that how it's designed. I think overall, yeah, it's, it's a space, looks like a nice addition for this building.
Thank you. Commissioner Wong.
I've said many times before about when we do remodels and upgrades, I'm all for that improving the property, but exactly that, I would like to see when they do these remodels that they do make it more unified and not have this dissimilar materials, and frankly, the wood clad siding, in my experience, seems to wear more than the stucco, and so you end up having a building structure that looks like it's been added on, and it's worn on the top, and it really doesn't appear to in my, my opinion, doesn't appear to add to the value of the neighborhood, and so I'd like to put staff on notice that when I see buildings like this, it doesn't look uniform, doesn't have similar material, doesn't kind of clashes together, doesn't improve, in my opinion, the value or upgrade the value of the property and the neighborhood that I'm intent, inclined to just approve of that. And then also, the second thing is, even though it's existing non-conforming, if they have an opportunity to remedy and improve, again, the property, you know, to address the parking issues, maybe even have more parking on the left side there, or keep that as a parking area that they, they make some concessions or make some alternative solution to address what would be non-conforming issues and the problems that they create.
Commissioner Wong, just to note, your audio is, I, I don't think it's just me, I hear everybody fine, but your audio comes in and out a bit. I think we all heard you fine, but just to note, it's kind of breaking up a little bit. But I, I heard you, okay, Commissioner Quigg?
I think the top being different is just fine, actually, that's the way my house is. The whole bottom of my house is stucco, and then the the, the rustics are up on the top, so I, I think it would be okay.
Commissioner Davis?
Overall, I think it's a lovely design, I'm also not bothered by the siding up top, I think it gives a little more visual interest than just have to be wet stucco. I'm, I'm looking at the bottom, trying to figure out where you might put it, put some siding, and I'm not, not really seeing it. From one bedroom to a two-room.
Commissioner Davis?
That's it.
Commissioner Davis? Is, I'm not sure if it's me, did, did everybody lose her, okay, we lost your last couple of sentences, so maybe after the siding being okay, if you can repeat what you said.
That, that was pretty much it, it's just it's a lovely design, it's a nice upgrade from, you know, a one-bedroom to a two, so.
Okay, thank you.
Nice.
I, I would, I would tend to agree, I'm actually okay with the siding and this above the stucco, and I've seen it plenty. It looks okay. I remember I used to be, wonder if that was okay, and I kind of pay attention to it now, and I think it's fine, and we had an objection last time about too much stucco, and this time we're saying it's too mixed, so I think it does provide a little bit of a difference without being way out there, so I'm comfortable with that. And then with the, with the parking issue, again, this is a non-conforming, it was non-conforming, I, I, if they, if there was a way to change it, they would, but adding another parking to the side is not going to change the non-conforming piece of it, because it's just there, so so I, I have no issue with that, and I think it is, it is a good upgrade. And it would be, hopefully, it'll be more functional, even more functional for the owner's use, so I'm fine with that. Having said that, do we have any more, do we have a motion, or do we have any more? Commissioner Quigg?
Yes, I can go ahead and make that motion if if so needed. Like a motion to approve the design review permit and a conditional use permit to allow a second-story addition and remodel to an existing single-story duplex residence and located in the duplex, triplex residential R two zoning district a subject to all the conditions and everything else that has to go along with the conditions.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Okay.
Commissioner Davis, second? Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Deng.
Oh, yes.
Commissioner Wong?
Nay.
I'm sorry?
No.
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
And Chair Joe?
Yes.
Motion carries four to one with Commissioner Wong. No.
Thank you, and Mr. Coghlan, so congratulations, and there is a ten-day appeal period, so please keep that in mind, but otherwise, we issue and the applicant to the project.
Oh, thank you.
And so we'll move on to new business, item number five, new business, there is none, and then staff updates, item number six, which is the update on submitted planning applications and future planning commission meetings, so this is just an informational item.
Yes, good evening, commissioners. Just a little bit of an update, we have the last webinar in the affordable housing series, four-part series regarding housing in San Antonio County, the next webinar is called Putting It All Together For A Better Future, and that's on Wednesday, December one, at six P M. So if anybody listening to this meeting, or anybody that you know, would be interested in this topic, Wednesday, December first, will be the last, the four-part series. And they'll be exploring topics such as where do we have space to create new housing choices, how we promote design excellence in new buildings in communities, so that is the last webinar regarding future planning commission meetings, we have a joint study session with the Plan, Planning Commission and City Council, December second, regarding the general plan update, and specifically the specific plan, and then also regularly scheduled planning commission meeting on December sixth, which is tentative at this point. Or we're waiting on some final information as to whether or not that'll be canceled or not, but as now, it's still happening, we will let you know as soon as possible whether that is going to move forward or not, so please keep an eye out for your emails regarding that meeting, and then that, that does it for staff's update this evening.
Thank you, and the joint session is from five thirty to eight, I believe, it's going to be a long one, longer than this time.
Yeah, this is right, we're getting into more of the details in the specific plan, last meeting, we discussed the heights and densities in the plan, and so we're kind of going to a little bit more detail regarding the specific plan, so we'll hopefully get some good comments, feedback, and to take back to our consultants.
Okay, thank you, that'll be nice, it's hard when you have ten people in an hour trying to ask questions and get feedback. Not a very good time. Okay, thank you, and then moving on to item seven, planning commission announcements, do we have any announcements or comments from planning commissioners?
This is for? Yeah. I suppose going to be promoting the tree lighting on December the fourth at City Hall, and you can send a donation to the Melbury Foundation for a hand-painted star that will be on the tree. Believe there's information on the city websites also, if not, melbryfoundation.org. And I understand we are going to have live and not virtual. I'm sure there's going to be some social distancing required and all that kind of stuff, but it will be nice to go back to the way it was.
Almost.
Unless something drastic happens, but that's.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, well, happy Thanksgiving, everybody, because we're not going to, I'm not going to see before our next meeting, and not until after.
December second, our next together is December second.
Yes, Commissioner Deng?
I did get a piece of correspondence, I'd like to make sure that I put that forward now, rather than forget for later. A resident, Joanne McMohn, who lives near a future development of, of units on the Woodman Lane, voiced some concerns about loss of parking in that element, and a desire for the city to make sure that we get as much parking as possible for that development. So I'll make sure I mention it before I forget it. Before that project does come up, it was brought to my attention.
Thank you, and maybe we can have that just go to the staff if they don't have it, and then we, we can't really discuss any project items right now. Yes, but thank you for that. Anything else? Okay, with that, oh, just a little past eight, so very efficient meeting, thank you, everyone, and again, happy Thanksgiving, and we'll go ahead and call this meeting, adjourn this meeting.
Bye-bye, thank you.
Good evening, Christian.
Thank you. Thank you.